Let's fight for one more.
Yeah.
Tallest meeting to order, roll call. Charles Randy, Steve.
Eric Burton.
Sean Harley.
George Knoll.
Here's Lawrence and Miss.
Derek Jones.
Nathan Moore.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion to open the public hearing on budget 2022?
Do you make that motion?
Second.
There's a motion by Erica, second by Sean.
Randy.
No, we got it. You're closer. Budget hearing for 2022. It's open to the public. Is there anyone for or against? Any questions? If not, motion to close the budget hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Minutes of nine, one, twenty, twenty. Any additions, corrections? I obtain a motion to accept.
Motion to accept, minutes of nine, one, twenty, twenty.
Second.
There's a motion as second to accept the minutes. Any discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Citizens input. Pam's got ground holes.
Other than the ground hole, do you know what they're doing back there?
Digging holes?
They, no.
Oh.
The people whoever owns that, because they, they surveyed and they're moving empty out of all those buildings.
Don't have a clue.
Huh.
You live there, you find out and tell us, okay?
Well, there's a problem with that, you know, we're not allowed on that property.
Yeah.
Did he sell?
There's an arrow, I saw it.
Where is it?
He'll sell it.
Little eagle.
Oh.
Both buildings behind my house, between our houses.
Tim Stevens managing, but he don't want it.
They go on forever.
I know.
Okay, nothing for citizens to put then?
Oh.
Other than that? I just want to thank everybody that did the memorial walk or members walk last week. That was great up to the park. And the support that the downtown businesses gave. The TGIF Friday this weekend for the last one, I think was good. I had an old acquaintance that graduated a couple of years ahead of me last night. Say that they are just, they don't even live here, but they can't believe how much stuff we're doing. They love coming back to town, so. Pretty good. Old business attorney report.
Only a couple of things to let you guys know about. One, the more property we've been, if you recall, involved in litigation, we had a bid process. We didn't have any bids the last time. We rebid that. We've got the next round of bids that we're going to open up at our next meeting on October 6th. So hopefully we can get some bids this time. Regarding the off-property development LLC, the suit that the town is involved in, that hearing is scheduled for October 27, 9:00 AM from 11, I'm sorry, from 9:00 to 11:00. And I will need a representative from the council as well as somebody from the plan commission, just things to be thinking about. We'll need to kind of solidify that before the date of that hearing and I'll obviously want to talk whatever that's going to be. The next thing I have is a proposal from NDOT. They want to acquire a parcel of property of .02 acres, which amounts to very little. But it's basically right on the, it'd be the northwest corner of the police station. It's so that they can put in an ADA curb. I sent an email to the council, Lisa, Jamie presented this to me, let me know what was up, but I sent that email, I think yesterday. So you've seen what's going on regarding what they want to do. The first, the threshold question is, is the town agreeable to selling that piece of property? And again, we're talking about something that's about as big as these two tables put together. There's also an easement or a right of way, as they're calling it, that's about that same size, allows them to do the work to put in this ADA complaint ramp or curb. The cost that they're willing to pay is $1,000. The documentation that they presented, and Jamie has the full packet, and I made copies of it, but we're talking stuff that is that thick. They're basically going down the road of eminent domain, so in other words, if we say no, we don't want to agree with this and do it, and it's going to happen anyway. Just to let you know. That's, so the threshold question is, do we want to go ahead and comply with this and work with them to try to get this taken care of? There's a, there's a secondary issue that I'll bring up after we've talked about that, and it's something that I've talked with this individual named Kasim Askar from DLZ. They're an engineering firm out of South Bend. But right now, the property, the, the police station, that building, there's two lots, those are deeded in the name of the Argus. Make sure I get this correct. But it's the, no, it's not, let's see. It's, it's called the Argus Emergency Services Building Corporation. It's a nonprofit corporation. And it was administratively dissolved by the Indiana Secretary of State back in 1993. So it's no longer a viable corporate entity, which causes problems. And talking with Kasim as to what do we do with this, there's basically a resolution that the town could put forward, basically saying that the town of Argus is one and the same thing as that corporate entity that was dissolved administratively, Secretary of State, because the town didn't keep up with that back in 93. There's a way through that, a way around it. It will kind of complicate things and just make a little more work for us, but again, threshold question is, do we want to agree with that offer, accept this and move forward to trying to get that resolved? If we do not, okay, then we'll just, I'll let him know that that's where the town stands, and then they're going to move forward with their eminent domain procedures. We're probably looking at the same money one way or the other. That's what we kind of need to decide and talk about this evening.
Derek, I'm looking at this map and there's way too many numbers on here for me. Exactly where is this?
We walk into the police station. Where we walk into the front of the police station.
Or where her hoof is.
Yeah, it's basically where the crossing guard station is.
I don't know that it goes that far though. They're looking into it for me. I had a talk with, I don't remember her name now. They want to put ADA sidewalks out there is what they want to do with that whole corner. So that's what they want to buy it for. But whether that crossing guard shack can stay or not, she's looking into that for me.
So it doesn't affect?
So it's just that one, they came in and get all the rest of, of tent through here, but they gotta have, they gotta buy the property to do that one?
Yeah, I don't know why.
Well, they're buying on both sides, aren't they?
Okay, guys.
Is it over by the post office too?
I sent you the map.
Yeah, I've got the map. I said, just wait.
No, it's just right in front of the police station.
I'm, I'm serious. It looks like it's about the size of these two tables.
Yeah.
Put them together is what they're looking at. And the easement is about the same size.
So they're wanting to put it on this, this southeast corner?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Be the northwest corner.
Northwest corner.
Right there.
Corner of the station.
Right where the shack is, right in front of it.
It's east from me. I'm here right now.
Oh, wow.
In south.
But of the building, it's in northwest.
Of the property itself.
But not across the street there by the post office? They're not wanting?
No.
Do that, just that one little section?
Because all this, all this is dealing with is this one little piece now. Do we see something in another two months about the other corner? Possibly. I don't know, but right now this is all we have in front of us.
So we accept their $1,000 offer or they do eminent domain and give us $1,000 anyway?
It'll probably be around about the same.
They need, they need the ADA side.
I, I know. Because they, they put it in the rest of it. Forget about it. Or if we just put it in ourselves and forget about it.
But that's, it's on their road.
Then we'll listen to them.
I think it's basically to upkeep of them.
George was also. So that, that would make them responsible for keeping that orange, the orange pad clean then, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because that's just where I'm saying, are they going to come down here and keep the snow off of that corner and everything else?
They'll have to own these ones they've put in, right?
Hey, let them buy it because then they can't say they don't own it.
Right, okay, that's fine. Let them buy it then, because they're going to do it anyhow. We can have a nice pizza party for dollars and dollars.
They got to sign a letter of intent to start the overpass out here before we give them that. We're worried about sidewalks than they are people getting head out here and killing.
Oh, yeah? Okay.
They care about that.
Hold on. I met with the attorney.
We do need to basically vote as to whether we would accept that offer or reject the offer.
I make a motion to accept the offer from NDOT for $1,000 for that little piece of property up there on that southwest corner.
I just have to get everything that.
There's a motion as second to accept the offer from the state for the properties that have taken us to all ADA compliant maps. Any other discussion? Other than Sean wants to hold them hostage? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, so guys, at the next meeting, we're probably going to have a resolution that deals with the whole issue about.
Yeah.
We have a corporate entity and guys, it's. Sorry, it's, it's bigger than just, just a little piece of property, okay? Because if you think about it, the whole building over there is owned by a defunct corporate entity and that's not good.
To me, that's an issue.
So, so what can we do about that?
That's what he's talking about right now.
That's what the resolution is going to address, because first, we have to clear that up. We have to basically, basically put that back in the name of the town, okay? Unless there's some other entity that you folks think we ought to do it, but I don't know who or where else that would go, but it ought to be.
Thinking of capital assets. Are there any other properties that are like that?
No, well, these are the only two. They're owned by that entity.
That's what I mean.
Yes.
Those are the only two that I think.
We, yeah, but to do any work over is who we have to own the property, right?
You should.
Yeah, yeah, that's. I had the gist of this and since 93, it's not been the case.
I'll make a motion to allow Derek to start the process of converting the property that is currently in a defunct corporation under the town Argus to a proper deed entitled for that property.
Second.
We're up for a vote.
There's a motion as second to allow Derek to go ahead and prepare a resolution to clear up the deed on that property.
EMS.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. That's all I have to report.
Attorney report? Motion to accept attorney report.
Motion to accept attorney report.
Second.
There's a motion as second to accept the attorney's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Anybody having the other old business?
Is that considered old business or?
I'm bad, it's up to you.
Well, this is old business because it does concern the fire territory. Mark Dean's going to be the fire chief and he's going to be the head of the fire and EMS both. And so right now, as we have EMTs that are town employees and they're working shifts and are getting paid, I would like to make a motion to have Mark to be in charge of them to make, to be sure that they are not, I'm not sure how I want to word that, overworking their schedule.
So after the first year, as you know, everything will fall under one, Mark will be in charge. We're just trying to transition into that, but we've got obviously a couple employees that are right now being paid by the town, so the territory could make that decision. So virtually Randy's asking that, that take effect now?
Right.
So after the first year, these guys will answer to Mark, electric, proof, payroll, he'll be the department head. So virtually just having that take effect sometime here.
And he's willing to do this, Troy, he's willing to go ahead and take over and be the.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mark Dean interim.
Already made the motion.
No, I didn't take him in the court. All right. Pass.
You're seconding the motion. Oh my goodness. Yeah. There's a motion. Would you repeat your motion, please?
Make a motion for Mark Dean to be in charge of the, he'll be the boss or in charge, the department head for the EMTs, the two hired EMTs.
For the EMS.
EMS.
So December 31st.
Till December 31st and when the fire territory takes place, then he will still be in charge.
There's a second.
Right now, we're going to study.
And there's a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Geez, that's wet.
Yeah. Any other old business?
They're taking care of it.
New business, Halloween. I say we have it on Saturday night.
Well, Halloween's always the 31st. You're trying to change it now, you said?
Well, it's on Sunday.
Or did you mean to put trick or treating on there?
You said Halloween.
That's what he said?
Yeah.
Halloween, do we say?
Halloween, when do we want to have the whole goblins out? Friday night, Saturday night? I would think this.
Saturday.
Saturday night, yeah, would be.
The 30th?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the normal hours of five to seven. Five to seven?
Five to eight?
Five to eight.
Five to eight.
Eight? Three hours?
Yeah.
I mean.
They're little leagues. They got a long way to school.
Rest of us are different.
Yeah, I guess it doesn't really matter.
So make a motion to have trick or treat on October 30th from five to eight.
Second.
Is that for the whole town or is that business and everything?
It's for everybody.
Business and everything?
Yes.
And there's a second?
Yes.
All in favor of having trick or treat from five to eight, Saturday, October 30th? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
It's a Saturday night, give another one. Soundless school.
Oh my gosh. Ordinance 2021-13 budget for 2022. Is there a motion to accept or to pass ordinance on the first reading?
Salute.
Second.
There's a motion as second to pass ordinance 2021-13 on the first reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I abstain because of the authority department, I cannot vote on it. Other new business? I'm, I'm going to ask for a request to, from Parkside Church to close South Street from Michigan Road to Maple on Sunday, October 31st. For us to.
I wonder anyone in LA.
Host our, our, what do I want to call it? Fall party? Our fall party? Yeah, no. Our fall, fall party?
Same one you do every year?
It's not going to be as big. It's, it's not up to the public so much. It's, it's just.
From what hours, George?
Nine to five.
Wow, that's a long time, yeah.
I'll make a motion to close.
The one between the park and the church.
South Street.
Yeah.
From Michigan Street East to, what's the next?
Maple.
Maple Street from nine to five on Sunday, October 31st, so the church can have their fall get-together that they have over here.
Second. There's a motion as second to allow the street to be closed for the fall party. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Department head reports, if there's no other new business.
Police. She should have my report. Here's a few things, I guess. Gary Spratt, our new hire, got, got, got his stuff back in the day from the medical people in Indianapolis. They're recommending that he pass his medical and psychological, so I need to do the, I need to do the paperwork and send that down to the pension board, so hopefully soon they'll be starting. Central Squares, that computer, that CAD program that we're doing, they're really gearing up, so we're going to be maybe going here and there and doing some stuff with that, trying to iron out all the bugs and kinks. And the one other thing I got is like, I think you see from our report, we had several criminal arrests this month. A lot of minor misdemeanor traffic related offenses, but we also had a child molester case, child solicitation case that we made an arrest on. Had auto theft from town, which was recovered by Iowa State Police, two juveniles with a 9mm handgun. That's all I have.
Busy month?
Busy.
Who do we have in the SRO?
Uh, we have a person definitely interested in the position of SRO. That's about all I can divulge and stuff right now on it, but we have a person that's very interested. We're still waiting on some details to make sure that we can do that. I'm not prepared to go any more depth than that right now.
We have two people interested. Actually, maybe three now.
Okay.
And I'll let you guys know that I'm looking into the issue of if they can, in essence, opt out or exclude themselves from the 77 Pension Fund and simply be on perp. And there's a statute that deals with that, which is a pile of fundraising. I do have a contact with the 77 Pension Fund and I just, I need to get on that. I talked with the court earlier and forgot time tomorrow, but I will make that contact and see if I can get some answers on that.
That is the issue that I was just alluding to.
Yeah, I saw the beginning.
And regardless, I mean, just so that we know moving forward in the future for anybody else, if we were in a burdenous position again, it's something that we ought to know.
Anything else for Corey? No. Utilities?
In my report, everything's going good, been busy like normal. We're finishing up Walker Park. I don't know if you've been out there. It's starting to, starting to look good. We're getting some grass growing and everything. We got one piece of sidewalk to finish up. We're going to finish that tomorrow and hopefully get the rest of the landscaping done. Just hauled a bunch of dirt out there today, so get that spread out, get it seeded. I think we might be done. If you remember back, it's probably been almost a year ago now, we looked at that vision metering program. We've been working with that for, for probably six, eight months. We decided to scrap that project. It just, we had, we had more problems and just getting more excuses and excuses, so we, we're pulling the plug on that. I've got another one we looked at today. It looks like a lot more promising, so I'll let you know what we found out with that. We're the same thing. We're going to demo it for probably a couple of months if we decide to move forward with it. It's about six months to get meters, so everybody's backed up on everything. The tile out here in the alley, we got ours fixed to the county tile. The county, we had a camera today. I talked to Craig at the county. They're going to go ahead and replace their trunk line. It's shot. It runs right next to the Quanta up to, I think, the back of the buildings. We're not sure if it goes under those buildings up town or not, but they're going to replace at least that section and we can get ours tied back into that and then we'll see where we're at, so. The, the building we're looking to build onto, the EMS building, we had a meeting last, last week or two weeks ago for the setbacks. We didn't get too far with it. The next meeting will be, is it October?
October 5th.
October 5th? I'm going to be on vacation that week. We need some representatives from the town there to answer questions. I got a letter from the state saying that they have no, no jurisdiction down here off that road on 10. They don't care about that building. They don't care what we do, so it's up to us and the zoning or planning, whatever, or that.
That's the first phase with the combinations, storage and.
Yep, yep. So it should be pretty easy, but we do need somebody there.
What time does that begin?
6:30.
6:30.
And George usually.
Yeah, I'll be here for this one.
Because he's on the plan commission too, so he'll have to be there as well.
Is that this building here?
Yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, it kind of put me back a month on that, so I was ready to get going on that. The other thing is the subdivision that we've been talking about. Final thing is the drainage. I've been working with Craig with the county on that too. I think everything got okay today. I talked to him today. It looks good, so that was the last thing we're waiting on. So I'm ordering materials, transformer, stuff like that. We're, I mean, we're six months out, so I got to get this stuff started ordering. I've got some manhole started. He's just going to kind of work with, work him in as he can, so I'll get some pipe ordered. As soon as those manholes start coming, we'll probably get going. I've got somebody coming in to level that ground and get, get that all going, so it's going to be moving here soon, so.
Does that work? You guys are going to do yourselves?
We're going to put all the tile in, we're going to do the electric, we're going to do all the rough in, so, and then we'll see where we're at. I mean, we, we may tackle the road and stuff too, I don't know.
Jamie, do we have or can we get the proper thing to put down in the trenches for the guys to be safe?
Yes, I have all that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll work with Haskins again, like I have in the past. He brings all his equipment in, so it, it works. I, I can't rent the, the equipment for what I can pay to have him come and work with us, so.
To dig guns and all.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the guys.
Yeah, there, there's one section that's like 18 feet deep. What we're going to do is we're going to take the top of the ground out, so it's only like eight feet, and then when we're done, we'll build it back up, so, yeah. Yeah, I'll make, we'll, we'll make it safe.
That way nobody get hurt.
No, I don't either, so. And that's, that's all I have. I don't know if you have any questions or anything. No, there's a lot here.
No, no, we don't need March report.
Jamie.
I'm just trying to keep him busy.
Sean and I talked about this and I've come down and talked to you too. We've had some problems about people wanting to drive fast all through town on these back streets. And the problem that we seem to see is we don't have enough speed limit signs. And I got looking, there's, I know Indian Avenue is marked and few of the, the state highways are all marked, but the rest of them, we, we need to get some speed limit signs. We need to drop our speed limit to probably 15 or 20.
I wouldn't go any lower than Marshall Street.
I don't think you'd go to 15, 20.
I'd go to sleep driving down Marshall Street.
20 is 20.
We could do 20, we could do 25, I guess, on, on the rest.
I don't know.
But we need something to let people know, because I said, I had a guy try to tell me he could, there was no sign, more or less, I had no proof that he was going faster than what he was supposed to be going, but.
Yeah, well, so I talked to Doug about this a little bit. Corey can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think any unmarked street is 25 miles an hour.
I believe that, I believe that's right.
Yeah, so whether it's marked or not, I mean, 25.
I, I think we need to put the signs up.
So Doug's looking into.
I think only 20 mile an hour myself, the same as Marshall Street.
No.
25 pounds of bass for some of those streets, really.
Some of the short side streets, but that's what we got to figure out, what we want streets at and all that, because like I said, if it's unmarked, it's 25. Doug's also looking into a, a small portable speed limit sign, you know, when you drive by, it'll tell you how fast you're going.
Yeah.
So we looked at a big, we looked at one. It was ridiculous how much it cost, but he, he found a smaller one that may be, we can move it around town and.
It's very useful.
You take care, Eric is going.
That's what you're going for, yeah.
There's a bunch of kids that 20 would be bored enough down. And, and there are certain streets, we need to probably on the individual, look at them.
Well, that's what we'll have to do.
Especially the narrow, the narrow streets up there, you know, in the old part of the town up where I live and that, and George lives. Them streets are too narrow to be running 25 on.
Golf cart goes faster than that.
Yeah.
What do you need, Corey?
Speaking of streets, it might understand, right, so this may be a stupid idea, but the park. First, the streets, am I understanding right, so this may be a stupid idea, but the park, the regular town park?
The community park.
We, so that's basically a thoroughfare, I mean, it's a street, right? We, we're.
It's never meant to be.
But we're, we're.
It's not a street yet.
It's not a street yet.
We plow it, correct? There's a speed limit, correct?
Yeah.
But that speed limit is lower, he'd have to look, but I guarantee you'll find a statute that ten, you can't have a speed limit of ten miles an hour.
Fifteen.
Yeah, is the minimum, so that speed, actually, that was a.
The speed limit out there is fifteen.
In park.
Ten.
Fifteen.
I was wondering if we could name it.
Name street?
Yeah.
Bowman Boulevard.
Well, not, not the certain. It might be easier for us.
Marcus Avenue.
You, you could, but the problem's going to be the park's gonna wanna give it to the town.
So, and that's something though.
So the town doesn't plow it?
Yeah, we, we do plow it.
But it's not our inventory.
And that's something I'm looking into, and I think we need to talk about that, because, um, if we did name that street and put it into our inventory, we could use Community Crossings money to take care of it, so, I mean, it'd save the, the park a ton of money doing it, Ed and I have talked about it. I haven't kinda, I haven't gone too much farther than that, but I think that's something we wanna do.
I was just thinking from the standpoint that makes us, we're just renting locations, it makes it easier.
I think it's a safety aspect, as far as somebody gets hurt, or somebody calls in, they say, you know, you're such, such street, it makes responding, EMS responding to, I mean, they know where they're going, they're not just looking for, you know, that's my take on it.
Kind of legal's we got there, Derek?
I mean, look, you can change any of the speed limits you want, for the, I mean, that's basically, I would say, kind of involve in-depth look at what you wanna do, where you wanna do it. Um, not just a, that's right. But at the end of the day, I mean, yeah, and I'm not aware of any statute, and I'm not saying it doesn't exist.
There's a minimum, I think, is what it says, and I don't.
That could be the case, but, I mean, everybody just, there's a whole host of issues.
I get, my question is for the, the park one, that street, to take it over, what kind of legal do we have to do with that? Since it's in the park, in the town, actually owns the park, could you go ahead and?
I would say it's a public.
Sure.
As it is, and it's, obviously, it's, it's owned by an agency or entity of the town. We have the responsibility to plow it, maintain it, upkeep, um, in terms of, is the question about naming it, or?
So we could do what he says, do we have to name it, or is it?
Can we just?
Considered our infrastructure?
I think it is considered, no doubt, it's part of your infrastructure, in other words, if somebody trips on a pothole, uh, walking down the road, they're gonna sue the town, and it's, whether it's the park or the town, it's all the same thought, I mean.
I'll, I'll talk to MACAG, establish it for me. And if they do, you want me to transfer it over and just get it in the inventory?
Yeah, so I don't even know that there needs to be a transfer, I think.
I have to add it to our inventory, that, that, so then we could get money through the state for it.
I'd, I'd name it something that, that's.
Like Park Street or Chesapeake.
All right.
George just did not.
Randy didn't get that.
Point blown full or fast.
High group.
Park Street would get it.
I don't think that would be a target for Park to name it, just because.
Oh no, they do the last one.
No, no.
Oh, no, no, we're gonna name anything else.
Yeah, we did that.
Well, that's a park to name, this is a park to street, so.
I mean, they're basically not, no. We did that for ourselves, so much.
Okay, that's, yeah, I want you to check into that for a street, yeah?
Goose Street?
I wouldn't get it.
Goose like.
Goose like.
Goose Street.
New shipping.
All right, fire department. You were done, weren't you, Jamie?
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's not a meeting.
After.
Yeah, my.
That's more here for it. EMS then too, since you're in charge, as of about five minutes ago.
Actually, a real much report, right?
We have.
Okay, we did receive the DNR grant, most of you, I hope you guys know already, for this, the twenty-one season, uh, that will go for new boots. So we just finished up the twenties in July, but the new twenty-one that I already received that as well, so. Here we'll be looking pretty good from twenty twenty-four.
Mark, did all the, we've received everything that we ordered?
Yes, the equipment.
All the equipment that we ordered is in now, cause I knew some of that stuff was delayed.
Yeah, which is involved with what we're using, but we have.
All the stuff that the ambulances do, everything's here?
Everything's here.
Everything's in.
While, while we're talking about the fire department, I wanna take just a second and really thank you guys, you know, we, we did this, artists did this TGIF, and the fire department not only put the fire trucks up to help block the highway, but for months, they furnished all the tables, all the chairs, they bring them out, they pick them up at the end of the night, um, fire department picks up the trash, they have one department that goes around and picks up all the trash, they get all that done. Uh, without them, we would've never had it, I really wanna thank you guys, cause it really made the job easier for us, cause we didn't have to go scrounging around. I found out where we needed some extra tables, it wasn't as easy as I thought just to get it, so, again, just a big thank you to the fire department for all that they've done to help in the TGIF.
Economic director?
I'm not gonna bring up any extra tonight.
Nothing extra tonight?
Good, it's in there.
Okay. Motion to accept.
I know, it's hard to believe.
Motion to accept department head reports.
Make a motion to accept department head reports.
Second.
There's a motion to second to accept department head reports, all in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I'd like to add, real quick, just to thank you to Mark as well, Mark is working on a lot of stuff, and I thank him for that. He's got a lot of stuff he's trying to keep track of, and he's doing a pretty good job of it, I think, so.
Doing a real good job. Thank nobody for that, allowing him to do this.
Thank you.
Yeah, you didn't specify which Mark, yeah, you just specified.
Mark Vander Wheel.
I hope he wasn't not keeping track of me.
Mark Dean's doing lots of too, but I wanted to thank Mark Vander Wheel, I'm sorry.
You know, some of you know it, some of you don't, uh, he gets his kids off to school about eight o'clock, and he's right over here. And he's here long hours, um, I, he does put in quite a bit of time, and we have our meetings and stuff, and he's always the first one here, so, yeah, he is. He's definitely putting in some time.
We had a meeting in here last week, Randy and I and Mark and a couple others, and went well into lunchtime, and we never, we didn't leave until we were done. And, uh, I thank him for that, and.
Claims.
So you have my, the report for September first through September tenth claim, which totaled four hundred and fifty.
Eight thousand.
Fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. And I told you this was gonna be a lot more because August couldn't close out by our first meeting, so.
Any questions for Lisa?
I have them for four or five days.
Make a motion to approve claims for nine fifteen twenty twenty-one, a total of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents.
I'll second that.
Motion to second to accept claims in the amount of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. All in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion carried, motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.